Test, test.
Hey, that's a good test.
Okay, we'll get to know, we're gonna hang up now.
Okay, bye.
Bye.
We are back. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. Our core value is student-centered, center everything we do on the students and student learning. Consent agenda items marked with an asterisk are considered routine and not requiring public discussion by the school board. Unless removed from the consent agenda, asterisk items will automatically be approved when the agenda is adopted. They have a motion.
Move to adopt the agenda with consent items.
Second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Alvarado.
Yes.
Thank you. Colonel Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett.
Yes.
Ms. Maple.
Yes.
Mr. Burgess.
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson.
Yes.
Ms. Marotti.
Yes.
Mr. Doran.
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
The next item is public comments on reports and non-agenda items, including general comments, input, and ideas, suggestions are all welcome. We have no one signed up for public comment tonight on non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the room that would like to testify? Seeing none, public comment is closed. The next item is our Borough Assembly Report. Savannah Fletcher, Borough Assembly Presiding Officer, will provide us with tonight's report. And welcome, baby Elio.
He's very sleepy today. It's not a commentary on the meeting so far because it's been lovely and inspirational, don't worry. But, good evening, school board. Savannah Fletcher here, Presiding Officer for our Borough Assembly. And I don't have any radical new updates. We've only really met once, I think, since the last time I sat with you all. But, we have a committee of the whole and finance committee meeting this Thursday, and then we have another regular voting meeting on December 14th, the following Thursday. And two things coming up on that agenda that I think may interest you all, the capital improvement program, I mentioned it last time I was here. We are actually going to be voting on the new projects. We'll be adding to that what we call our KIP, the CIP. And that does include maintenance, facility upgrades to our school buildings, as well as other facilities across the borough. So, if anyone wants to come give updates, if you want to compare that to some of the capital program project priorities you all have that you're sending to the state, I think it's a good opportunity to make sure we know what you guys are prioritizing for your buildings, and we're reflecting that. The other thing coming up on the 14th is the long-awaited vote on the Early Childhood Development Commission and whether or not it will join with the Library Commission. This was before an earlier assembly body and was not voted on, so we are going to discuss it this Thursday and then vote next week on it. I know it's not directly under the school board purview, but relates to similar topics, so just sharing that. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions you all have, but we just have one meeting this month, and then, oh, no, I lied, there's one other update. We met with the Interior delegation, as I know you all did in this past week or two. And one of our biggest legislative priorities is to fund to the basic need for education at the state level and not to keep shifting that burden onto our local community, and I think that really aligns with your priority of having that base student allocation really be increased. And one way we can see that burden shifting back to the state is by reducing the required local contribution and really making sure the state fulfills its basic need to the full. So, we're kind of merging those goals when we go down to Juneau to talk to our state representatives, and we look forward to partnering with you guys on funding our school as it should be. So, that's all I have.
Mr. Doran.
Thanks for being here and for your work on the Borough Assembly, really appreciate that. Just a question regarding the Ohr Hall project. I've heard that maybe the Assembly may move forward on a resolution regarding the developments over the last several months, number of months past year, actually. Is that something that's in process, thinking about, or not, you know, just out there and we'll see what happens?
You know, individual Assembly members might be planning something, but at least as we've been setting the agenda, no resolution about the Ohr Hall has been noticed yet. So, there's nothing currently before the body as a whole.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Is there anyone else? If not, I do have a question. You mentioned the KIP program will be on the next Assembly meeting agenda. Will the board member in attendance be able to participate in that debate?
Yes, that definitely falls under the purview of relevant to the school board for the projects that pertain to the school district. So, I, as Presiding Officer, would rule that is perfectly in line to participate in that conversation.
Thank you. Any others? All right, thanks so much for coming.
Thank you all.
The next item on the agenda is the President's Report. Last week, like the Borough Assembly, we were able to meet with the Interior delegation. The majority of our board was able to attend at the Fairbanks Legislative Information Offices. During that meeting, the administration and board members were able to discuss the dire financial situation that our district is facing next year, given our $28 million budget deficit. Also during that time, we invited our local legislators to come and visit our schools and see firsthand both the amazing work our educators and students are doing on a daily basis, but also the real-world effects of nearly a decade of flat funding and budget cuts. A majority of our legislators have taken us up on our invitation, and we are so grateful to have them scheduled to visit many of our schools over the next several weeks. Last week, as part of that same meeting, I was able, or I had the privilege of joining House Representative Thomas Chevsky as he visited Tannenall and Lathrop. During our tour, I was so impressed by the work of all the educators at both schools, especially given that at many of the schools, they do not have chemistry teachers, and they're having to teach that via a program called Elevate. Or in some of our IR programs, there are paraprofessionals who are keeping those classes functioning. And having worked with those paraprofessionals in the capacity as a teacher previously there, they're fantastic assets to our community, and our students are in good hands. Meeting, our, sorry, Dr. Minor, myself, and Mr. DeGraw were also able to meet with the Mayor and Presiding Officer Fletcher and discuss where the Borough Assembly is feeling on being able to fund our local contribution. As Presiding Officer Fletcher shared, they described to us what funding to the basic need means. And it doesn't mean necessarily that they are giving us less. It means that the state, instead of continually saying we have to cover more and more from our Fairbanks tax base, has to fund to the basic need that they set. So, if anyone was worried that the two things sound similar, they're not. We do have a great working relationship with our Borough Assembly, although I am excited to hopefully get something calendared, to have a board and assembly meeting jointly. Going back, the board will be having a upcoming, we call it a retreat, but it's all work on our board governance and policies. So, currently that is our Chapter Two, and it will be our Chapter Nine, once we finish our policy update with ASB. And that is how the board conducts itself, and there is a lot of work that I am excited to do there, and that will be January 19th and 20th. All day here in the boardroom, like any other open meetings, acting, you're welcome to come observe. It will also be broadcast on Zoom, or not Zoom, on YouTube, so those discussions are open to the public. The last thing I wanted to say was on the 11th, so next week we will be having our Legislative Committee meeting, where we'll set the board's legislative priorities. It's a continuation of the work session the board had last night with different members, including many stakeholders, like our union representation and other members of the public, and there is still one spot that is open to fill, and that is a parent representative. And Ms. Carm, or Ms. Richardson, to put you on the spot, is that application live? All right, by tomorrow, we will have the application available on the Legislative Committee's website. If you are a parent in our district and would like to join that discussion next week on the 11th, we would love to have you apply. And that concludes my report. The next item on, or were there any questions for me? Sorry, the next item on our agenda is our Superintendent's Report. Dr. Minor.
Thank you, President Hardy. I'd like to start with thanking the Fairbanks Chamber of Commerce for their invitation to provide a State of the Schools address today to their membership at their weekly luncheon. It was a great opportunity to provide an overview of the amazing things happening in all of our schools and discuss the need for adequate funding to ensure we can continue providing an excellent education for all students every day. The principal hiring process for two of our schools, West Valley and Lad Elementary School, will begin this month. Postings for the positions will go live on December 15th, with hiring committees convening in early January. These are the first known principal vacancies that we'll work through, and depending on who's hired at West Valley, that will determine how we proceed with the North Pole Elementary position, as Principal Kang is filling in as an interim there. The district's fiscal year 2023 annual comprehensive audit reports are now available on the Accounting Services website, and those will be presented to the board at the January 16th Board Meeting. These reports stand as a testament to our commitment to transparency in the school district, financial accountability, and the effective management of resources for the betterment of our educational community. And a shout-out to our Business Services team and our accounting departments as they conduct amazing business practices and are always, the auditors are always very complimentary of the work that they do for our school district. Lastly, I'd like to provide the board and the community with Reed's Act update. That's something that we feel is important to continually provide updates on the progress of our elementary students and educators. Currently, elementary students are in the progress monitoring phase, as well as continuing interventions. Progress monitoring allows educators to use multiple data points to monitor how students are responding to the interventions that we're providing. Using this data, school teams can identify and investigate what might be contributing to possible learning delays. Regular communication home to families is a key component of the Alaska Reed's Act and our district's commitment to families as we work through this new literacy initiative. The M-Class Program, which is the early literacy screener we're using for our students, provides a resource called Home Connect, which matches students' needs with activities to do at home. And each Home Connect provides an update specific to the student with strategies offered to target their area of need. So, as a family and as a guardian, if you haven't checked out Home Connect and you have a K3 student, I encourage you to check it out. As a parent of elementary education students myself, I found this to be one of the most useful and accessible parental resources I could use to help my students in their early literacy journey. Across all elementary schools, there have been over 11,000 separate instances of progress monitoring. So, thank you for all the amazing educators out there doing difficult work with our students. Early analysis of progress monitoring shows positive movement, especially in schools and classrooms, with strong implementation of the core curriculum. Interventions and progress monitoring, and one of our elementary schools, I'd like to provide some data, is that 65% of our first graders are at or above their growth goals. So, these, the state of that I'm talking about is growth. 50% of second graders are at or above their growth goals. And an outstanding 81% of third graders are at or above their growth goals, which is outstanding, given where they were from our initial benchmark to where they're at today. Schools are in the initial stages of standing up the outside-of-school support requirement of the Reed's Act, and that's taking a couple different forms. One, in the form of in-person tutoring at some of our schools, and schools without that capacity are relying on virtual tutoring services. Lastly, the winter assessments are open soon, so next week, our winter benchmark will open for M-Class, and that will run from December 11th through the 22nd. And that concludes my superintendent report for today.
Are there any questions? Seeing none. The next item on the agenda is the School Board Resolution 2024-11 honors Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and proclaims the week of January 15th, 2024 as a time for teachers and students to conduct special studies of Dr. King's life and achievements and to safely engage in service activities throughout the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District. Ms. Marotti, would you please read the resolution?
I'd be honored to, thank you. Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education Resolution 2024-11 honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Whereas, the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District envisions excellence and equity for all. And whereas, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. also dreamed of an outstanding education for all children. And whereas, Dr. King believed education transmitted and accumulated knowledge of the human race, as well as the accumulated experience of social living. And whereas, Dr. King dedicated his life to justice, equality, and service for the greater good. And whereas, the principles, oratory, and achievements of Dr. King are worthy of emulation. And whereas, the third Monday in January, a national holiday since 1983, has become known as a day of service by which to honor Dr. King's legacy. And whereas, a day of service empowers individuals, strengthens communities, bridges barriers, creates solutions to social problems, and moves us closer to Dr. King's vision of a beloved community. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education honors Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. by proclaiming the week of January 15th, 2024 as a time for teachers and students to conduct special studies of Dr. King's life and achievements and to safely engage in service activities through the Fairbanks North Star Borough and School District.
We had no testimony signed.
How about a motion?
Do you have to do the motion first before public? All right, Mr. Doran.
Move to approve Resolution 2024-11 honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Second.
We didn't have any advanced public testimony. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak? Seeing none, public testimony is closed. Is there any discussion from the board? Mr. Doran.
I just want to comment, I think the importance of doing these on an annual basis that we don't forget a lot of these legacies that are there and those interests that are so important for our students and for our community. So, I'm fully supportive of this, and I appreciate that it comes back for a regular reminder, mindfulness, I guess, is at play here.
Seeing no further comments, Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado.
Yes.
Colonel Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Doran.
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett.
Yes.
Ms. Maple.
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Burgess.
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson.
Yes.
Ms. Marotti.
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-12 honoring Black History Month. Our core value is respect, embody respect for and diversity and dignity of all. School Board Resolution 2024-12 honors Black History Month and proclaims February 2024 Black History Month and encourages staff and students to honor it during February and throughout the year as with interactive research, classroom lessons, guest speakers, displays, lectures, practical activities, and cultural celebrations. Ms. Burnett, would you please read the resolution?
Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education Resolution 2024-12 honoring Black History Month. Whereas, since 1926, our country traditionally commemorates and celebrates the contributions of African-Americans during February. And whereas, since our nation's bicentennial in 1976, each president has issued proclamations declaring February as Black History Month. And whereas, African-Americans and the arts is this year's national theme and spanning the many impacts Black Americans have had on visual arts, music, cultural movements, and more. And whereas, African-Americans have contributed significantly to the economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development of the country, as well as to that in the Fairbanks North Star Borough. And whereas, African-Americans value knowledge and learning. And whereas, students of African-American heritage are a significant population of the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District student body. And whereas, African-American teachers distinguish themselves as educators in Fairbanks North Star Borough School District classrooms. And whereas, African-American principals and assistant principals have led their schools with vision. And whereas, school board members of African-American heritage serve with distinction. And whereas, African-American exempt paraprofessional And whereas, African-American exempt paraprofessional and classified staff support all students' learning. And whereas, incorporating an accurate portrayal of African-American history into the curriculum and teaching, the contributions of African-American history, culture, society, and language in the classroom, promotes academic success for African-American students, increases the understanding of all students, and benefits all citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education proclaims February 2024 Black History Month and encourages staff and students to honor it during February and throughout the year with interactive research, classroom lesson plans, guest speakers, displays, lectures, practical activities, and cultural celebrations.
Could I have a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 2024-12 honoring Black History Month.
Second.
There was no advanced public comment. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Is there anyone on the board that would like to comment? Seeing none, Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-13. Our core value is respect, embody respect and diversity and dignity for all. School Board Resolution 2024-13 proclaims February 16th, 2024 Elizabeth Perotovich Day and encourages staff and students to honor her historic contributions and commitment to the ideals of civil rights and non-discrimination throughout the district and on an ongoing basis. Mrs. Sanderson, would you please?
Yes. Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education Resolution 2024-13 honoring Elizabeth Perotovich Day. Whereas, historically, Alaska natives faced overt discrimination in housing, theater, hotel, restaurants, and public facilities. And whereas, civil rights activist Elizabeth Perotovich, an Alaska native of Klinkit heritage, was leader in the civil rights movement in Alaska and worked for equal rights and freedoms for all Alaskans. And whereas, Elizabeth Perotovich's courage, vision, and impassioned testimony inspired the Alaska Territorial Legislature to pass a resolution entitled "An Act to Provide for Full and Equal Accommodations, Facilities, and Privileges to All Citizens in Places of Public Accommodation Within the Jurisdiction of the Territorial of Alaska." And whereas, when Governor Gruny, Ernest Gruny, signed the Anti-Discrimination Act of 1945 into law on February 16th, 1945, it was the first anti-discrimination bill passed in Alaska and occurred two decades prior to the Federal Civil Rights Act of 1964. And whereas, in 1988, the Alaska State Legislature designated each February 16th as an annual Elizabeth Perotovich Day in honor of her commitment, pursuit to overcoming discrimination in Alaska. And whereas, Alaska's governor annually proclaims February 16th as Elizabeth Perotovich Day in Alaska and encourages all Alaskans to recognize and reflect upon the tremendous contributions Elizabeth Perotovich made in Alaska and her people. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education proclaims February 16th, 2024 Elizabeth Perotovich Day and encourages staff and students to honor her heroic contributions and commitment to the ideals of civil rights, non-discrimination throughout the district and on an ongoing basis.
May I have a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 2024-13 honoring Elizabeth Perotovich Day.
Second.
There was no one signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the room that would like to provide testimony? Seeing none, public testimony is closed. Are there any comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
The next item on the agenda is a special education report. Our core value is collaboration, engage with students, family, and staff and community to support student success. Executive Director of Special Education, Kate Hall, will present the board a special education report.
All right, so it's working on my end? Good. So I'm excited to be able to talk about the Special Education Department and highlight some of the things that our our staff does. We have a pretty complex department with some complex programs. So I'll give kind of a brief overview and then if folks have more specific questions, I'll be glad to answer any of those. So the mandate of the Special Education Department is to locate, identify, and serve all eligible students with disabilities in the Fairbanks North Star Borough. What a lot of folks don't know is that we are responsible not just for students who are enrolled in our school district, but any student starting at age three that we suspect of having a disability in anywhere within the borough or students who are not enrolled in other districts' programs throughout the borough. Our programs are regulated by the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. We serve students ages three through 21. Should I? Okay. She warned me about a second screen and I really didn't think I had one. All right, thank you, sir. Let's try this again. All right, so we serve students starting on their third birthday through their 21st birthday. There are 13 eligibility categories under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. That is a federal act. Those 13 categories are described at the state level and we use the categories as described. At the state, we serve 2,658 students. As of about three weeks ago when I did this, when I set the slideshow up, I think we have gained two students in the last month. And so the numbers are a little bit off, but pretty close. We have 410 staff members, including numerous specialists. So we have special education teachers, we have support staff in a variety of positions, from direct student contact to secretarial support. We also have school psychologists, occupational therapists, speech-language pathologists, physical therapists. I'll leave someone out. We have vision specialists, deaf and hard of hearing teachers. Hopefully, I got most everyone. We have staff and students at every district campus, including our Golden Heart Academy. Oh, that's not good. Golden Heart Academy, our best program, our smart program, Midnight Sun Academy, and all of our schools of choice. I don't know what I did. All right, back again. This slide just highlights some of the programs that we have within the department. I won't necessarily go through all of these and there's probably a few that are missing here, but these are some of the functions that we serve in serving students through the Special Education Department. Special education has a knack for acronyms. And so many of these little red bubbles are in fact acronyms. The CPI training as example stands for Crisis Prevention Institute. Some of the other acronyms on here, I probably won't even be able to tell you what they are. Bridge, I'm not 100% positive what that acronym is in my memory. So our student services, we have resource services, which would be typically students who have learning disabilities or other health impairments under those 13 categories. We serve just over 1,500 students in our resource programs. We serve preschool students. At the time that I wrote this slide, we had 115 preschool students. Our preschool population grows more substantially than our other populations throughout the year because unlike kindergarten, where you have to be an age by a date to start kindergarten, you are eligible for special education on the day that you turn three. So it's a constant rolling increase in students. And I believe the last I checked, we were almost up to 140 preschool students. And so in a pretty short period of time, those can change based on our child find screenings. Our extended resource program, which focuses on students who have significant behavior needs, has 195 students in it, and our intensive resource program has 201 students in it. Again, some of these numbers are off just a little bit when I'm doing math later from changes on a month-to-month basis. Our speech and language program serves far more than 559 students, but there are 559 students who only have speech and language needs. So most of our students in our resource program, our preschool program, as well as our intensive resource program, also have speech and language needs. And then there's sort of the general category of other, which includes orthopedic impairments, visual impairments, deaf and hard of hearing. And again, that's in the absence of other types of needs. So 10 students are served in there that aren't also in a preschool program or aren't also in an intensive resource program. This slide is looking at some data in terms of where you'll find special education students and a comparison with the three other large school districts that are in the state. Generally, if we compare across the state as a whole, it can be really skewed in that very small districts can have percentages that look really remarkable, but it's based on such a small number of students that it's usually easier if we're able to look at just the larger districts. This first slide, we report both to the state and to the federal government related to the amount of time that students with disabilities spend participating in general education environment with their typically developing peers. And there's some cutoffs of times for that. The first of those is spending 80% or more of your school day in a general education environment. The spots that I've highlighted in blue are areas where a district has both met the state target as well as exceeded the state average in those areas. And so I'm very proud of the fact that the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District consistently beats the state average and consistently meets the state target for the percent of students that are participating in general education classes for the overwhelming majority of their school day. So large numbers on this slide are good, large numbers on the next slide are bad. So we want this next slide to have smaller numbers. And this is the percent of students that are participating in general education classes for less than 40% of their day. So kids who have a specialized environment for the overwhelming majority of their day. And again, highlighted in blue are areas where we are meeting or exceeding the state target as well as doing better than the state average. And again, we're consistently meeting those and generally speaking, above the state average when we're looking at the big school districts. One of the other things that we're responsible for that a lot of folks don't know is a huge sort of technology lift. Luckily, Johnny's around to help with the technology things that I can't do here. But for certified staff, we're responsible for 350 devices that go through our assistive technology department. So most of those are used for things like assessment with students. We have also our district-wide, I didn't touch it, our district-wide teachers and specialists, the standard laptop rollouts that happen through school campuses. We do 80 of those from within our department. And so we purchase, distribute, and track all of those items. For classified staff, we also have 20 devices through our assistive technology department, as well as 30 that are standard laptop rollouts. And then I think what's the more remarkable figure here is for student use, we have 52 devices that are for our students with visual impairments and 393 devices that are distributed through our assistive technology department. And for those of you that don't know, assistive technology is technology that's used to help students address their disability. It can be like speech-to-text kind of things for either writing or reading. It can be magnification of devices. It can be, there's a term called far-point copying and far-point reading where a student might need an iPad that's on their desk where the rest of the student's able to look at a presentation such as this. And so those are the types of devices that are tracked and distributed through the assistive technology department. And the assistive technology department is exactly two people. So I just want to highlight, when I say department, it's probably a bit of an overstatement, but those guys are great and they work very hard. Something that we started back in the spring of 2022 in order to sort of help with and help with the difficulty in both retaining sped paraprofessionals as well as hiring sped-certificated staff, was a tuition reimbursement program that we do through our state grant. We've done that three times a year since 2022. And in that time, we've had 37 reimbursements that have been provided to 20 separate individuals. Right now, our reimbursements, I believe, are $1,200 each semester, so $1,200 three times per year, which comes pretty close to being able to eventually get a certification completed with very little individual or personal money into that. And we've had six sped paraprofessionals since that time that have actually completed a certification program and have secured employment with the Fairbanks School District. So I find this to be one of the most gratifying things that we do. We've actually had two folks that are the Fairbanks graduates, who were then Fairbanks paraprofessionals, who have used this program to become Fairbanks-certificated teachers. One's an SLP and one is a teacher, so those are my hurrahs. And then we also do a fair amount of professional development within our department. And this is something that I've really focused on this year. Time is challenging with professional development with special education because our special education staff exists within a general education environment also. So all of the things that apply to Alaska REEDS and all of the things that apply to new curriculum, our staff is responsible to do those in addition to understanding the additional parts of their specialties depending on where they work. So I've listed some things here that are professional development opportunities that we've provided throughout the last year. We have new hire training that's in addition to the regular new hire training for onboarding new staff. It's an additional day for special education at the beginning of the year. LEA training, LEA stands for Local Education Agency. All of our IEP meetings have to have a local education agency representative that has a very specific role within that meeting. So we do training at the building level as principals request for both the principals and folks that they make their designees for LEA. Something that I'm super proud of, we've increased the number of credit courses that we're able to offer. I think we have as many as nine hours over the last year that we've offered for folks to be able to not just get professional development time, but also get hours of UAA credit in addition. And those are taught by folks within our staff, both our teaching staff and our administrative staff. We're responsible for the CPI training for the school district that's mandated by the state. We've added to CPI Ucaro training. Ucaro is a trauma-informed approach to creating an environment that emphasizes comfort over control. The goal here is to ensure staff and student safety while we're reducing the number of restraints and seclusions that are happening in classrooms when we have volatile situations. We don't want the default to be hands-on kids. And so it's giving folks additional tools in addition to CPI training to help reduce the number of restraints and seclusions. And we'll have better data on that. Hopefully this summer we'll have gone through a full school year of most of our district-wide programs having UKARU training. And we had a couple of pilot schools last year that did that as well. And we'll be able to look at the data that we report to the state on restraints and seclusions. So I'm really optimistic about that. LAMP is a speech and language program that we've supported within the district for several years. We do LAMP training for paraprofessionals during the PD days. We've had de-escalation training and responding to behavior training that happens as requested by principals. We've also done those in partnership with the Human Resources Department for substitute teachers as they come on. A lot of folks want to have CPI training. And what people don't understand is that CPI training is about 80% de-escalation and about 20% learning about hands-on kids. And so we do the de-escalation portions without the hands-on kids portions. I sort of feel like the more people we empower to feel like they can be doing that is a mistake. It increases the number of people who are willing to sort of put a physical component into that. So we really emphasize de-escalation training. And I'm thankful to the Human Resources Department for allowing us to do that with substitutes as they come in as well. That helps tremendously. What else? I don't need to read through every single one of these. Another thing that we've done is sponsored travel for national and state conferences. We have a lot of specialists within the district, occupational therapists, physical therapists, that the standard PD that we offer as a district doesn't necessarily directly relate to them. And so as we're able to and have funding to do it, we like to be able to sponsor travel for folks to do their national conferences. And I think that is the end of my general overview. And I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Ms. Burnett?
Thank you, Ms. Hall. First off, I don't think I've ever seen you have so much joy in your face when talking about something. No, that was absolutely amazing. And I was seriously enthralled just because you seem so excited when you talk about this. So that's amazing. And big kudos to your staff. It seems like there is a lot going on that they're handling. And so just my big respect out to your whole department. Absolutely amazing. I had a couple of questions going back to slide six. That was the one with the numbers that you said, we want to see these low. And as long as these are low, these are good. I'm just curious, what would you consider bad? So what numbers would look bad there?
Well, anything above the state target obviously would be bad. We want to be below the state target. I think being below the state average is also good. As a general baseline, when we're not just looking at Alaska, I think having 1% is kind of a magic number for, we don't really expect more than 1% of the population to have such significant needs that they aren't benefiting from significant levels of general education. And so when we're looking at the nine, you know, we're at roughly 9%. This 9% is 9% of our special education population. The 1% magic number is looking at our overall student body, so that 12,500 number. So I don't want this to be misread as 10% of our overall students don't have that access to general education. That's 10% of our special education students.
Awesome. May I ask one more?
Okay, and my last question, just the discussions around the technology and devices that you guys have, I'm just curious, is everything still in good working order? Everything's okay? Does it need updated? General question.
The answer is no, it's not all okay. You know, tech gets old and it dies and it stops having the ability to update. And so we're sort of constantly on a cycle of renewing that. Generally speaking, because there's so little money for stuff, as those of you who were at Dr. Minor's presentation today learned, we have very little money for that stuff. And so the strategy is generally, as we have, I hate to call it windfall, but you know, things like CARES money or end-of-year grant money or that sort of thing, we tend to focus on trying to update it at that time because we know there's going to be that constant flow. But we do not have the luxury to budget in regular updates.
Got it, thank you.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight and the report. Talking about the preschool program and as students or children turn three, they become eligible and so, how does that impact our preschool programs that are in existence? I'm thinking how classroom sizes, PTRs, how do we deal with that in that model of, what a model of service for them are?
Yeah, it's a predictable growth cycle, which is positive. So we sort of know that in April, we're going to have far more students than we had in October. And so we're able to predict it in that sense. I will say that this past year, it was my hope to be able to open an additional preschool program. We were able to do that in terms of figuring it out with funding within the grant, but we weren't able to secure a teacher. So we ultimately weren't able to open that program. So preschool sizes are a little larger than I would like them to be. We run preschool on an AM PM half-day basis. And so they grow. And spring preschools are large and it would be positive if we had additional classrooms.
But there is somewhat of a predictability.
There is definitely a predictable cycle of that growth.
Yeah. Okay. If I might?
Go ahead.
In terms of the professional development, do we still have the option that, again, depending on scheduling and student needs on any given day, but the option for the sped teacher and their paraprofessionals to train together as a team?
Yeah, we've done a handful of things to try and make that possible. The thing that we run up against in terms of team training together is the lack of subs. And so having whole classrooms out at one time has too great an impact on the students in that room. What we have done is been able to make some Saturday trainings available for teams that want to do things like CPI together. Last year, I think we had three Saturday CPI sessions. We also were able to do some sessions in coordination with our ESY program so that folks that ended their day at 1:00, we could pay them for additional hours after ESY was over to be able to train outside of student contact days. And we've made a real effort and I very much thank our building principals for this. We've made a real effort to make professional development available on all of our professional development days, including our building days. And we give principals the discretion to allow us to invite their staff or not on those days, depending on what they have going on, certain, you know, there's title requirements and that sort of thing where it's difficult for us to take staff out. So we definitely take that into consideration and we try to make that as possible as we can, but it is challenging based on subs right now.
Great, thank you. And I want to go to somebody else and I've got one more set.
I've got some too, so I'm going to put myself. And I did this one though, I didn't write down and send to you, but it should be pretty easy. Are the preschool students also funded by our October count? Or is that funding, it's a different part of IDA? How do we?
Yeah, they count in our October count same as any. So growth later in the year, those students won't be in our October count, but it doesn't.
When they come. So we know it's going to be bigger in April, but we do not receive any state funds for the fact that those classrooms are far larger.
Correct, yeah.
And then I'll ask one more and then pass it back to you, Mr. Dorn.
There is a small piece of our state grant that is specific to preschool. So there's two parts of it. There's a 6B section and a 619. And so we do have some grant funding that's specifically related to preschool, but it's relatively small.
And it doesn't change on size?
It does not change on size in an active way, no.
Okay. And then what ways are we currently working to recruit and retain our sped professionals, both certified and classified?
Yeah, so the tuition reimbursement that I talked about is one of those ways. We also, part of my emphasis on professional development over the last couple of years has been an effort to, I think particularly with paraprofessionals, we're having folks that don't necessarily have training in special education or in working with students. The more we can make them feel comfortable and confident and safe within their classrooms, the more likely they are to have positive experiences and stay and sort of understand the, this is supposed to be corny, but sort of the joys of teaching, to be able to not just be stressed out throughout the day. So professional development is a big part of that as well. We do a number of national conferences for our specialty areas to recruit at those. And we have started actively recruiting far earlier in the school year. We have what we refer to as our generic TBD pool. It's our location-to-be-determined sped teacher pool. And we have our first applicant today. So I was very excited that we had somebody get screened through today. We haven't interviewed or anything yet, but we do have a screen-through applicant at this point. And all of our specialty areas, we're able to have those posted prior to their national conferences. And there has been, through HR and thanks to communications, Josh has put together a push for classified staff. We've got radio ads, we've got some Facebook ads that are specifically targeting work within special education.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you. A few questions around the para teacher support. I'm very, very glad to see that again. We get different iterations of this and this one is specific and limited to sped?
Yes, and it's specific and limited at this stage to ESSA staff moving into certificated positions. So there's been some discussion about FEA non-sped teachers getting sped certifications, but that has not materialized as of yet.
And in terms of ESSA staff as opposed to just sped paras, my question around is, is this open to other paras? I'm thinking of how many sped teachers came through custodial services, food nutrition, secretaries, librarians. It may not be an opportune time for them to switch position depending upon where they are in the salary schedule, but they have an interest. We have other instructional paras that want, stay where they are, but they're interested in the sped piece, becoming a sped certified. Could they apply also?
They cannot. And while I wholeheartedly agree with you in terms of philosophy, we fund this entirely out of our federal grant and it's required that 100% of every dollar that we spend is spent specifically to the benefit of special education students. And since we have folks who don't necessarily finish, I feel very comfortable arguing that a sped paraprofessional taking classes in special education is going to benefit a sped student whether they finish a program or not. I can't necessarily say that same thing about custodial staff or nutrition services or a library assistant, for instance.
Okay, but it's limited by the grant?
It's limited by the confines of the grant. So if we had hard dollars for it, we could open it up more broadly, but we do not.
Good one more.
Go ahead.
Also, with that in this area, I'm assuming part of this is working with the university for that certification. Is there a consideration for that sped para to get, if you want, credit for their internship time, they're in the classroom, they're working there, those opportunities? And I know in the past, I've run into problems with that being more difficult to help a para become a sped teacher. But working it through, where are we today on that?
Yeah, and so we do work with UAF, but we also have a number of folks that are in different universities, UAA, we've got some out-of-state universities as well. What practice has been for the last several years? If you are a sped paraprofessional working in your internship within the classroom that you're working in, you can continue to get paid your regular paraprofessional rate and you essentially trade with your teacher for the period of time that you need to do that. If it's a situation where it takes a dramatic change and you can't do your internship in the classroom that you're working in for some reason, and I will tell you, I can only think of one situation where that's happened and it only happened for part of the year and there was a requirement for elementary to secondary change that was required by that person's university. But in general, we've been able to make that possible.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Ernie? Ms. Maple?
I was so excited to see you on the agenda for today. All of these programs that you are in charge of essentially, I mean, are just so life-changing for so many families, including my family. Quite a few of the programs that you mentioned have impacted my family directly. I heard as you were talking, you know, that retention and hiring are a challenge as well as technology. I'm so impressed, you know, I continue to learn more about all of the challenges that all of our teachers and support staff are up against, whether it's funding or access to technology, but that they also consistently are providing so many services so well, taking care of our kids every day. And I'm just so impressed. But aside from the retention and hiring and the technology, I was wondering if there's any other, you know, striking things that are striking challenges that you're having that we should be aware of beyond those that, you know, we're seeing across the board in the district?
Yeah, that's always a hard question. I think, you know, I think challenges are consistent across a lot of departments. Substitutes, technology, all of those sorts of things are fairly consistent. Something that's really challenging with our staff, we have a number of programs that we don't offer within the state. And so you can't become an occupational therapist and live in Alaska. You can't become a school psychologist and stay in Alaska. And in my time here in the school district, that's changed a little bit in that there's more and more virtual programs. And so making those things available. We do have school psychologists now who have been able to stay working in their positions in the school district and get their credential at the same time. UAA has started a program in partnership with ECU for speech-language pathologists. But even just the sped certificate, there's just such a small number of programs within the state that offer that. And folks that are working, you know, UAF has a master's program and there's been some changes with a, what do you call it, a minor within special education at UAF. And so that's been helpful as well. I would say the biggest thing is just an encouragement for folks to spend time in our district-wide programs specifically and really encouraging substitutes to pick up those positions. We have a substitute pool, but we don't necessarily have folks that are picking up the classrooms that are in the most significant need. And then also a recognition that there's some of our teachers that are really just going to heroic efforts at this point. We have a number of vacancies. In some cases, we have long-term subs that are filling those vacancies. Some of those subs are certified and can do the whole job. Some of those subs are not certified and their colleagues are in their buildings or helping with the parts that require the special education certificate. And we have a number of teachers that are actually manning two classrooms. Ms. Hardy had brought up Tannenaw earlier and the paraprofessionals that are keeping the IR program running at Tannenaw. There's a single teacher that's doing both district-wide programs within that school. And the folks that are doing that are doing a phenomenal job and are really quite amazing. And so I don't want that to become the norm. So just a recognition that those are extraordinary circumstances and people are rising to the occasion, but it's not sustainable.
Did you have a follow-up?
I just wanted, I appreciate what you ended on that, because, you know, one of the things I said is knowing that all the things that so many of these people are, many of these teachers are up against and still making things happen and that that shouldn't be the expectation. I agree that they, you know, you said it was heroic, that I'm so grateful that they are doing that. But that, I just wanted to acknowledge that, yeah, that's not sustainable that we see that and that, you know, the goal is to get more support for all of those situations. So, thank you.
I'm going to ask one or two and then I'll throw it back to you, Mr. Doran. So how many of our sped classes and services are currently being provided via Elevate, which is the distance online where the instructor is not based in Alaska?
Yeah, so we have a number of vacancies in our certificated staff, as I mentioned. A few of those are at the high school level. And in two schools and one of our alternative programs, we have classes that are being taught remotely by special ed certified teachers in a live, interactive format with a classroom paraprofessional. At this point, over a first semester, we have 12 sections. So not 12 individual classrooms, but five classes at one school, five classes at another school and two classes at an alternative program that are being taught in that fashion. And I believe in, to a certain degree, that'll be changing in second semester.
That's good news. The next one is, I did send early, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
How many of our related service providers, so our OTs, our PTs, our SLPs, our school psychologists are remote at this time, so they're not based in Alaska?
Yeah, I looked, we have two remote OTs. All of our PTs are physically here. We have three remote psychs and, I cannot read my own handwriting, unsurprising, and 10 remote SLPs.
And I'm going to pass it to Ms. Marady, since she hasn't asked any, and then you, Mr. Doran. Go ahead.
This is a broader question that Mr., or Dr. Minert might need to help with, but I was speaking to a legislature recently who said that sped is covered by the federal government. So when we say that we need funding, sped is, is fine. And more sped means more money. And, and that cannot be farther from the truth, but I'd love someone in the professional world to explain that.
Yeah, I can help explain that, and Kate can jump in as needed. So, we definitely don't have funding for the needs that we're seeing, and unsustainable is a great way to describe it. Part of the funding formula for the state of Alaska, which we receive the large majority of our funding from, we have a base student allocation. That base student allocation then is run through a formula. The multiplier effect for special education is roughly around 20%. We're now seeing more students above and beyond that 20% that we get through that funding formula. And so as this rate of exponential growth goes for special education, the district becomes further and further behind in the revenue it needs to provide the services for our students. Additionally, one of the things, you know, a challenge that we see in the district that Ms. Maple brought up, asking for challenges, is that at some point in time, we would really like to reclassify our para professionals in the classrooms, acknowledge the hard work that they do day in and day out. We've looked at costing that out, and that's well over a million dollars to do. And so as we're facing, you know, $28 million worth of deficits, you know, that's not something that we're potentially looking at, at this time. But, you know, if the state changes the formula, if the feds actually did come in with appropriate revenue for the district, those are the types of things we would look at that acknowledges the amazing work our educators are doing.
Thank you, just a, a quick follow-up clarification. So, we receive the multiplier for 20%, but we're seeing sped, a number, a growth in sped students and sped over that 20%. And so we have to cover that difference, that amount over 20% through our general fund. Is that correct?
That's correct.
It's kind of like transportation where they give us some, but we have to cover the difference?
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
And related to the federal piece of that, outside of the, the general fund hard dollars that, that on a global sense, I don't necessarily, I can't necessarily speak to, we get federal pass-through grants through the state that are based on district enrollment, and that accounts for less than 10% of our overall department budget.
Mr. Doran.
And if I can hitchhike first before I come to my last question, in terms of the previous discussion. If I am correct, in terms of federal support for sped under IDEA, actually, they have authorized up to 40% coverage of those costs, but they have never appropriated, actually given money for, they did approach approximately 20 years ago, the 20% mark, which was a real high, everyone was like cheering them on, and I believe now it's about 17%. So the feds don't, there's a misperception that the federal government funds special ed to meet its costs. They recognize they're not, were never planning to cover all of it. States have to kick in, et cetera. But they have never even gotten to the halfway point of their ideal. I think that's an important piece to keep in mind.
And, and if I may, I think something that can be dangerous when we start talking about multipliers and we start talking about student populations, our special education students are general education students. They get additional services. In some cases, they're in specialized classrooms. But it, I think it becomes shaky ground when we start trying to present it and, and have dollars that are following specific students and those sorts of things. It doesn't really work like that. All students benefit from an improved gym. All students benefit from transportation working correctly. All students benefit from the library being a quality place that's manned by a certified quality librarian. And so I think when we start to divide students up by a classification and tag money to that beyond what's needed just to run departments, it, it is shaky ground.
So if I can use that for my last question? The, it's talking about the students themselves. And I will preface it in terms of saying that it is remarkable and so impressive to watch the teams, sped teams, within individual classrooms, within a school, and their work with the reg ed staff in terms of the services to students. My question is, in terms of qualifying for sped services, I know the focus is on looking at an actual need as opposed to saying whether they, they've had the opportunity to learn. That certainly has been a question, and I hear that within our community sometimes in recent years, because for some students, they were unable to go to school for one reason or another. And maybe family circumstances, a whole lot of different things. Could you talk a little bit about the current day eligibility and if, for referral for sped? And what you're seeing in terms of that learning need versus perhaps loss of opportunity to learn?
Yeah, and I, I don't necessarily have specific numbers in front of me, except to say that over the last, I would say since about 2015, we've seen a really steady increase in our sped population. Obviously, that is pre-pandemic. We, we regained our pre-pandemic numbers, I believe, at some point over last school year, and have far exceeded those numbers at this point within special education. And when we look at that as a comparison to our general education numbers, which are down, our overall percent of sped students is much higher than it has been in the past. There's a combination of factors for that, something that we definitely keep in consideration. And I think why there was a little bit of a burst in particular last year is teams didn't want to jump to saying a student had a disability coming back from remote learning, where exactly what you're saying, whether or not a student's had an opportunity to learn, has had good access to the classroom and good access to teachers. It, it can color how they're performing, whether or not they have a disability. And so we didn't want to jump to tagging kids with disabilities. There's a certain point in time where if, if the improvement isn't happening, action needs to be taken in some form, and it's really impossible to ever completely untangle exactly what the issue is. And so I think we had a, a, a period in time where there was a lot of benefit of the doubt that was being given, that over last year, teams felt compelled to, to go ahead and make eligibility determinations at that point. I'm not sure if that answers your question exactly, but.
No, well, well answered, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Then back to me.
Okay.
So, and I know that this has updated since the last time I asked, but how many unfilled certified positions do we have in our IR and our ER classrooms?
So, yeah, thank you for the data-specific questions. A little bit of time to look at those, and I have got, I went through them today. We have 13, so let me preface by saying certificated positions include all of our related service staff. Related service staff, far more than other areas, are filled with contractors when we're unable to get district hires. I am not counting contracted positions in these vacancies because they are filled with certified people, but in the grand scheme of the contract and recruitment, they would show up as being recruited still on the district website. And if, if by some chance we had a unicorn arrive that wanted to be an FEA eligible occupational therapist, by golly, we would, we would work on getting them in. So with just straight classroom-type positions, we have 13 vacancies. Many of those are filled with long-term subs at this point. Many of those long-term subs are in fact certified, but not all of our positions are filled. And you would specifically asked about IR and ER as well. Three of those positions are in IR classrooms, and three of those positions are in extended resource classrooms.
And I so appreciate that you went and got that information.
Yeah. And I know I wrote down classified. Did you just ask me that also, or did I make that up?
That was the next
Okay.
Question, so you were right.
So 25, or excuse me, 29 classified positions are vacant. And one note about the 29 classified positions that are vacant. We have approximately 16 para positions that we added to support our certified vacancies. So if you were to take out 16 positions that we put in to fill in certified gaps, it's not quite as gruesome, but it, again, when you're a kid sitting in a classroom, those are, those are genuinely people that are missing, so.
Yep, and overall, when you look, if there's 13 vacancies, and then three of those are in IR and ER classrooms, those are classrooms that require a significant amount of experience and need.
For certified, yes.
And the para professionals are having to pick up the, the slack in a lot of those classrooms. So more Herculean efforts. And the reason I'm asking these are not gotchas. Kate and I discuss quite often, sped is doing a tremendous job with a lack of funding and a lack of having available applicants. It's more to illustrate just where we are as a district and why we need proper funding for special education and our district in general. Leading to that, so that we're all on the same page, we hear a lot of misinformation about sped funding and how students in sped receive 13 times our BSA. Could you explain what student counts towards intensive needs funding and what is required of us to qualify a student to be intensively funded?
Yeah, so like Dr. Minert said, we have a 20% multiplier for special education in general for the BSA. The intensive multiplier happens after all of the BSA happens, and it is, it is student-specific. We literally scour through individual files to run through criteria that's set out in statute. And there's seven criteria that have to be met, that again, are laid out in statute. They're very specific. Some of them are objective test score type information. Some of them, some of the criteria is related to the types of service and the amount of time that a student is spending in special ed. And I can read from part of the statute that just essentially, that a student requires significantly more resources to provide than the services received by other special education students. So even within the statute, it makes clear that that multiplier is not for all special education students. It is for students who have the very highest and most intensive needs and require lots of resources. And so we, that happens during sort of the October count time. We submit files to the state for approval. We won't know that information back for a while. But just for context, our district-wide programs, so the slide that I was showing about students who are in intensive resource, preschool programs, extended resource, those are our district-wide programs for students who have the most significant needs, and can, and their, their needs can't necessarily be met through primarily general education resources. About 27% of kids who are in our district-wide programs do not qualify as intensively funded. So e, there's a huge misconception that being in a district-wide program automatically makes you intensively funded. More than a quarter of our students that are in district-wide programs are not intensively funded.
Would it be safe to say that a student might even have para professional support throughout some parts of the school day and not be intensively funded?
Absolutely. You could in fact have a student that had 100% support throughout the entire school day and didn't meet numbers of other criteria and, and was not eligible for intensive funding.
So a whole FTE with simply just a BSA normal?
Correct.
Yeah. Was there anyone else? Okay, this is my last one. So in your slide, talking about the percentages, that's for our total sped population. So what percentage of our most needy students, our IR and our ER students, are participating in the regular education classroom for 40% or more of their school day?
Yeah, and I, I looked to see if there was a way to individually disaggregate that information quickly, and there was not. So I did do some crusty rough math, and I will do some better disaggregation if you would like. But if we look at overall numbers and we say, you know, roughly 9% of our students are in general education less than 40% of the day, I can get the total number, so you've got about 2,400 kids. I can look at, you know, keep running through percentages, and it's not exactly correct, but essentially 1% of our overall student body has access to general education less than 40% of their day. And when we look at it in terms of just sped, it was 290 out of 390 students who are in a district-wide program that spend more than 40% of their time in general education. So it's, I feel like it's a pretty good percentage still.
Were there any other board questions? CNN, thank you so much, Ms. Hall. That was so informative and well done.
All right, thank you.
The last item on our agenda is board and superintendent comments and committee reports. If we want to start down this way, Mr. Lopez?
I didn't have anything to report, I just wish everyone a happy holidays.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanderson?
Well, I would like to, thank you, President Hardy. I just wanted to let everybody know that June Nelson Scholarship application is open. It's a scholarship across the state of Alaska for $1,500. And we've been able to, last year, we awarded 15, $1,500 scholarships toward post-secondary education. And up to two of those were awarded to returning college students. Up to two scholarships could be given for students in the trades and vocational, or training. So I just want, the, the, go to the AASB website, and the application deadline is April the 1st, 2024, 5:00 p.m. And please, when you go onto that website, take your time with the prompt and the application. Your application is scored by points, is scored by multiple board members. And having a full scholarship, I mean, a full application packet that's completed makes our job a lot easier. So we just want to encourage our students listening to do that, and any guardian or parent to encourage their student to apply. And we have awarded some of those scholarships within the Fairbanks area to our students. Secondly, I had the opportunity to represent our state and our board at the conference, the CTE conference. I'm just a little scared tonight. But I just want to say to the listening community, to our administrators and to our board members, I think, I know that we want the best for our students. And after just being in the presence of over 5,000 or more attendees with breakout sessions from anything you could imagine, it would make all of our hearts just jump with joy if you could see. We were able to do our own tour to a facility. There are four-sited facilities, and you can share those with everybody. And I'm passing out some stuff for you to look at. And it's a, it's a dream, because what we walked away with is partnerships. A near community is, is, can't do without it. Partnerships with business partners, you can't do without it. And to see a facility, it's what we all dream of. To see a facility where if a student is in the cosmetology tree back there, and they know exactly what classes they have to take, these students are in classrooms that mimic professional settings. So when I say a cosmetology, they are in a cosmetology classroom. They have a waiting room, a reception, they do public appointments where they get to work with the public. And in each of the faceted, we were just at one site, but on one site, it had everything. So the walkaway is that our trees in the back there, each student really starts at middle school level, and maybe a little earlier, and they start to walk through those trees, knowing what they need, where they're headed. And they get assessments, interventions with their counselors to see, are they on point on, you know, are they focused? Do they need to change gears? And somewhat, what we do here in Alaska is that in every facet that the students were engaged in, every functional engaged in, every functional site, they walk away with their certificates, their licensers in hand. It's part of when they enter into it, how they've structured this CTE learning environment. One of the things I got to witness was, of course, the automotive, but they've always had the automotive part, but the part they didn't have was the wave runner part for the little machines, apparently nobody's working on those, and so they partnered with the community, one of the big vendors there, and they onsite, they supply them with literally cool machines, they buy one or two, but they also make sure that they donate, and so they are doing actual work, they're shop, each one of them are equipped in their own uniform so that they are, every aspect, once they walk in and they are filtered into their CT class or module, Las Fourts tonight, they actually are dressed professionally, they have, just doing the medical part, which was crazy, they had this huge table, so it was featured at the conference, it's a medical table, it's more like a digital television, but say if you were doing a wrist, it basically has taken a live 3D shot, a sliced shot of a cadaver, and you can manipulate that onsite on the table so that you can actually see the different layers, there's muscles, tendons, the whole works, and then you can project in any classroom that a student's working on. So needless to say, it was overwhelming to be drenched in that kind of an atmosphere. I did learn that this specific facility does not take their Perkins money, they allow their middle schools to take the Perkins money, and then they do bonding and grants and donations or in-kind, I'm sure that's not the right word, but to make sure that they are sustainable. And the other thing that we're always tasked here within Alaska is transportation, because I asked about students who are low social economic, you know, they don't always have transportation to go to some awesome site like this, so how did they deal with it? And so what they did was, they were able to partner with different car dealerships and they provided them with a van or bus, really modern, then it was wrapped in the technology, it was wrapped in the digital, whatever, like the buses, our buses is wrapped like that, so it reflects the different sites and the different campuses that the buses would be on. So the bus would pick up their student from the middle school or high school, bring them over to the CTE site, once they completed their work or their classroom, they would take them back to their school, so then they connect with the public, with their buses, and I just thought that was phenomenal. And then they have one other thing where they have drivers who are able to help students with their travel, and then they have specialized programs that only seniors are privy to. And what they have found out, that any student who enters into the CTE component or field or focus, it's like 90 something percent graduation over regular students graduating, and every last one of those students walk out connected to a job, to a service industry, to a medical field office, or walking right into their chosen field of work. And we started our work here, we have some phenomenal things we're totally proud of to be able to share what we have done here in Alaska. A lot of people were interested to know exactly how we function here, and it was a privilege to be able to have that communications with them. So your brain was overloaded, but it was just good to see, and many of the people from Alaska, so we had a lot of our Galena, Delta Greenlee, a lot of other folks who attended that conference, and it was totally worth all the walking and looking at everything, it was just phenomenal. I just wished our whole board could have been there to see it, because you just would have come away just thinking, we can do this for our students. And so we'll now have to look at how we can partner with businesses and, yeah, with businesses and partners here in our community to help us fund this pathway for our students so that they can achieve what they set out to do and have a different way to take care of themselves and pursue their goals. Thank you for the opportunity.
Ms. Maratti?
How do you follow that? Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. For some, this next month is a season of celebrations, whether it's Saint Nick's Day, which we celebrate, and that's tomorrow by the way, or Hanukkah, or solstice, or Christmas, or Kwanzaa, I wish you all a month of joy. Sorry, I'm getting over a cold too. For some, this next month is a time of challenges, and to those, I wish you support and strength. And for some, this month is a time of service, and to those, I thank you. And if you're looking for a place to serve our community, I know that our school sites and our student support services and our program called Bright Futures, they have needs that could use your help. And lastly, if you're looking for a place in our community to serve, some of our local nonprofits that could use your help, those include the Breadline, the Food Bank, the Interior Alaska Center for Nonviolent Living, the DOR, FNA's Street Outreach and Advocacy Program, SOPE, the Rescue Mission, the Fairbanks Senior Center, they have the Meals on Wheels program there, and the Resource Center for Parents and Children, and those are just a few. So if you have a need, please reach out to your schools or any of these or more amazing organizations, and if you're fortunate enough to volunteer your time, please reach out to your schools or any of these amazing organizations. Thanks.
Colonel Cole?
No, thank you. So happy holidays to you and yours, and if you guys are traveling over the holidays, I wish you all safe travels for you and your family. So thank you.
Colonel Alvarado?
Hey, I apologize I can't be there today, I figured I'd give you guys a break, but I really wish I was and I was with you in spirit now that I could finally talk. I can't say any better than Colonel Cole did, we wish you a wonderful holiday season, and it is such a pleasure to be a part of such an amazing group of folks, and I really, really hope to see you guys very soon, please reach out anytime. And again, we can't thank you enough for the wonderful support from the community on a daily basis. And Dr. Minert, I appreciate you guys coming out on Tuesday, the 12th, to come talk to our parents again, and again, it just shows the enduring commitment that the community has, and we look forward to a long partnership with you guys. So thank you and great to see you all.
Ms. Maple?
Thank you. I just wanted to, this was my first board meeting where we approved resolutions, and the language at the end of all three of them included "on an ongoing basis," and I just wanted to highlight that as I think maybe the most important part of these resolutions is that we're bringing attention to these various days or months and reiterating that it's a great reminder and that it is also something that is supposed to be relevant every day, all of the time. And I know that at my daughter's school, it is that, you know, these themes are not only taught one month, one day of the year, and I'm really proud to know that that's happening there and across our district, so I just wanted to touch on that. Thank you.
Mrs. Burnett?
Thank you, President Hardy. First off, thank you, Pumba, for the break, though we always miss you, I just want you to know that as much as you think you're giving us a break, we miss your presence, so Merry Christmas to you, sir. I look forward to tomorrow morning, visiting West Valley High School with Representative Carrick, I'll be joining with Ms. Anderson, and it'll be a good visit, and I just look forward to being able to take Representative Carrick through our school and show her all the things that our students are doing, and show her kind of all the challenges that our schools are facing as well. A big thank you to Ms. Kate Hall, that presentation, again, that was awesome. Parental Engagement Committee, we are looking for members, our application is up, it's live, it's ready, please apply. We would love to have a meeting in January and get this show on the road with parental engagement, so if you're interested, please apply, go to the website for Fairbanks, Osteo Barrow, K-12, and get your application filled out there. Hockey is going on this week, and there is lots of it, if you love high school sports, go out and check it out. North Pole and West Valley will be taking on West Anchorage, who are coming up, I do believe, starting tomorrow. Valley will be playing them on Thursday and Saturday, North Pole, I do believe, is Friday, I could be wrong with that, sorry Patriots, I'm working on it. If you do have a chance to visit the games, amazing concession stands are being offered by these schools. North Pole, FFA, big shout out to you guys, you're absolutely amazing, knocking it out of the park every single time. So please come out, enjoy some West Valley and North Pole hockey, it's going to be a great time this week. The American Red Cross is seeking nominations for the 2024 Red Cross of AK Real Heroes Award, check out the district's Facebook page, it's right there at the top, the link is right there, check out the video, it's a really cool little video, and apply or nominate somebody who you feel is a hometown hero of sorts. Barnett Magnet, they are putting on Annie Junior, and I'm so excited for this, it's going to happen on December 16th at 7:00 p.m. over at the Haring Auditorium, so it's holiday season, get out and enjoy everything our kids are doing. And last but not least, I would just like to go off what Ms. Maratti was saying earlier, there's tons out there for help this holiday season, Santa's Helpers is looking for people, another organization out there, the Food Bank is always looking for people and donations, and there are helping trees all over the community, the Big Dipper has one, I know FPD has one, I do believe the hospital may even have one. If you see a helping tree, grab one of those ornaments off of it, it's helping kids right here in our community who may not have much for Christmas, so it's a great way to help out. And last but not least, I'd like to request a Christmas tree. That's it.
Mr. Burgess?
Thank you. So first of all, I echo Mrs. Burnett's comments about looking forward to getting into our schools with some of our legislators, I will not be going to West Valley tomorrow, but I have others scheduled, and I'm very much looking forward to not only getting a closer look at some of our schools that I haven't had a chance to visit yet, but also to begin those important conversations with our interior delegation regarding funding and other priorities. So I also wanted to say, you know, it is the holiday season, many, many holidays will be celebrated over the next month, spanning a variety of religious, cultural, and historical celebrations, observations, and traditions. For many, it is a time of joy, of togetherness, family, and giving. Many of us celebrate our family, including our chosen family. For many others, it is a challenging time. This can be for many reasons, whether it's loss of a family member, ostracization or alienation from family, financial hardships and the pressures of the holiday season, seasonal affective disorder or depression and other issues, and a variety of other reasons. And for anyone who is struggling, I want you to know that you're not alone, there are resources out here for people who might find themselves in crisis, including the 988, the National Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, we have Caroline Crisis Services in Alaska, and, you know, failing all else, you can just call me, I'll be here for you. So happy holidays to all who do celebrate, and remember that the days are getting brighter soon, starting literally on the 21st solstice, and yeah, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you, President Hardy, and for all the board members and their comments. I do have a number, but we will not go over time, we will not need to extend. First off, I want to thank President Hardy, I had mentioned here earlier, bus safety concerns impacted by, or potentially impacted by the R-Hall plan along the highways and through our school district. It's also been raised by a number of people in the community, so I will be working to draft a resolution, I'm planning to bring it forward to the board in February, and are looking for one or two board members who may be interested in working on that. So if you are interested, please let me know, and we'll get started on that and get it ready for February consideration by the whole board. I also wanted to note that the State School Board of Education is meeting tomorrow, it is virtual, and one of the items on there is consideration of new cut scores for AK-Star statewide assessment. Their consideration is to take the recommendations that DEED is presenting to them, the Department of Education and Early Development, and then they would go out for 30 days, public comment period. So there's an opportunity, I think, for people to respond and testify tomorrow as well as at their next meeting after they've gone out for public comment, and to send in written comment. The reason I particularly bring it up is that these assessments have a direct impact on our students, our community, our schools, and we have a resolution that was initiated by this board, by the Fairbanks Board a couple of years ago, and then picked up by the Alaska Association of School Boards endorsed by all its members, districts. So to ask for an analysis of the assessment system, cut scores are only one small piece, and they don't stand in a vacuum. We have not looked at the tests in terms of item analysis, student perspective, the standards are over 10 years old and have not been reviewed and relooked at, and so there's been a lot of things in education that has happened, and so it is an important thing. And so we also have accurate measurements that are really informing education and the instructional process, so more on that to come, but I wanted to bring it to people's awareness that that process is right in the forefront, starting tomorrow with the state board meeting. Then our budget committee, I wanted to give a little preview, you'll be getting a formal report from the committee on this, but I think there were some real important highlights that came out of it, and these are takeaways from the conversation, four nights of conversation, quite extensive. And, you know, it was on several things, but what really struck me too is that the lens that stakeholders at the table brought was learning instruction are students, and that everything really needs to come back to that. They did highlight some priorities, and they had some feedback for the superintendent, the superintendent had asked us, as he had mentioned at one of our previous meetings, these are some topics that we need to be talking about, school closure, contracting custodial services, shortened day or week scenarios, you know, shortened school year, how do we deal with these things? And what came when the group talked about those things, they kept coming cost versus benefits, and looking at, it's not just a matter of saving money on any one of them or any of them, but it's also what is its benefit for learning and trying to use that lend? Will it, if we took any of these actions, what would it do to help student learning? And that's a broad thing, it does involve the environment that they're working in, you know, so buildings are a very important thing, facilities, those types of things. I will say that the one that probably got the got the, that did get the most conversation and probably says, go ahead and take a real serious look at it, although they recognize it's a long-term type of thing, is school closure. As they said, it's very emotional. It's impactful. But it's something that probably we need to look at. And it was also recognized that it may not be the places that one would normally look at, because there are many, many complexities of neighborhoods and looking down the line, five, 10 years, as to what these aspects would be. So they didn't really see it as something necessarily for this year, but it's something that we need to be cognizant of. So some of the priorities that did stand out really quickly, surprise, PTR. That was probably the first one. As soon as somebody said it, they said, yes, you know. There was a lot. Yes, that's a really, really important priority. Workforce excellence was recognized because of its impact on student learning and the student experience. Without the people, we can't provide for the students. And you'll get a little more, you'll get more detail on these types of things, you know, later on. But I just wanted to highlight some of them like that. You know, life skills. Mrs. Anderson was talking about those types of things, but broadly, life skills, not just CTE, but life skills, how do you, you know, day-to-day, college, these types of things. Having choices and the multiple pathways we have, a couple of things that came up with North Star College, CEC, and those types of programs that are really important, that student services and its availability at each school, those broad things, student activities broadly as not just extra, but co-curricular, inter-curricular. So those are some of the things that stood out for them. You know, we'll put that together, but I wanted to give you a preview of as we came together as a group, what were the main things that surfaced in those conversations? And then the other area we looked at was to get some sense from them as stakeholders on how to deal with revenue projections. And the scenarios basically were, we go with what we know and take no risk in putting something out there. So we go the very basic, that 5960 as the base student allocation is what we get. We ask no more from the, from the borough. Their basic line was 50 million. They did add a supplement, but there we go with the basic. Okay. Do we go with something that we could feel some, we're going to take some risk? Basically, status quo, the one-time funding we got this year from the state, the extra, the full amount with the supplement that we got from the borough? Or do we start reaching out a little bit more? And there was a general consensus on it that we look at that middle ground, that we do take and approach our budget at having at least the 87.5 million, which is about 8 million to us, in one-time funding, that we would get that either one time or onto the BSA, and that we would get at least the 54 million from the borough. But as they discussed it, we, they said, well, no, we should ask another five, which is what we, the 59 million, which is what we asked last year from the borough, recognizing that there's balances and things like this. But that that be more of a lens of how we look at it. It does happen to dovetail with some of the numbers that Superintendent Minard has used recently. You know, it gives us a $15 million deficit yet instead of 28. But that gives you, we wanted to get some read from the stakeholders around our community. So I wanted to mention some work session ideas. I will send you a note on these, but just so that other board members are aware of them in case you say, oh, yeah, that's a great idea. You might say, you know, no, that's a really silly idea, you know, or not a priority for us at this time. So a couple of those that I wanted to toss out for work sessions is basically how our students are doing. That we really have a work session on that, graduation rates, attendance rates, participation in activities, course completions, achievement. I mean, there's a lot of things there. A work session on alternative education services, not just options, but what our services are. And we talk about those. We have quite a number of those, different things. The work session on budget priorities, I had made a notation on this. And then last night, when we had a work session on legislative priorities, I was thinking, this could be something very beneficial to the administration. As I've watched our budget discussions over the years, boards have had to step back and say, well, wait a minute, what do we, we think you're not just doing nickel and dime or trying to figure, you know, this balance we add here, we cut there. But so, just putting in the hopper. Professional learning communities, where are we with that and an understanding for the board as we are a professional learning community? And then, you know, there are other types of things, but those are a couple that I wanted to toss out. And as I said, I will write my details, but if anybody else gets tickled by any of those and says, oh, yeah, I'd like maybe include this. And I'm getting close. Another thing that I want to toss out to the board is the idea of learning snapshots or school snapshots. We have a lot of new principles. And I count myself very fortunate that I have generally flexible enough schedule that at times I can work in those visits to schools. I know it is much harder for some board members, best intent, but because of work schedules and such, and smaller kids, that's an impact. But a way for us and the public to hear about the wonderful things that are happening in our schools. So, you know, I would like, would suggest these be absolutely timed with the timer going, three to five minutes, maybe a template. Nobody can have more than five slides or whatever, because you don't have to compete against each other or bring, you know, in terms of technology or things of that sort. And if you're ready, no questions, including from me. And basically being the idea that if you have questions, get in touch with the principal, go visit. You can do that. But it also keeps the principals and less off the hot seat, or more off the hot seat and such. So just an idea, if that's something people, you can give feedback to that. The last two things I wanted to comment on is the absolute pleasure of doing the school visits. The reason, you know, as I'm working on my school site visits and program visits, I have just been touched by the spirit, the atmosphere that people are working on to establish, the, really the joy, seeing the joy of educators and students being together and working together. And how many times students have, you ask them a question, but then A, they elaborate, they enrich, and somebody else comes in and, you know, and say, oh, well, you need to see this. And then somebody else would take the lead. One of the other students would take the lead on it because that was something they were into. But then somebody else will add something and say, oh, but you need to see this. But they were absolutely sharing their, what they were doing. And I could spot teachers over on the side kind of glowing with pride of their students. And two other observations that I really made with that in the last couple of days, it really struck me because people say, well, you know, students are always working on technology, you know, and using, they're stuck on the computer. I would say pretty accurately that 90% of what I saw was non-computer, non-device. I even saw students writing in cursive. I get that question. Oh, they don't teach cursive anymore. Oh, yes, we do. And they're using it. And there is appropriate use of technology. So I wanted to thought that, you know, I'm saying no, because we use that. But teachers are using it well. Students are doing it well. And they are, but they are doing lots and lots of hands-on types of stuff. And I won't go into all those details, but it's incredible, the things they're doing. And last is, today, it struck me, what a thanks we owe to our Fairbanks community. It struck me on two fronts today. It happened to come together, was one of the productions that was done for students in cooperation with the Fairbanks Arts Association and its many partners, whether it's plays, whether it's concerts, opportunities for musicians and others to come to schools, but also to give large concerts that, in this case today, it was a play production. But what a giving community we have to provide those opportunities for our students. And then it was reinforced at the Chamber Luncheon when the superintendent gave State of the Schools, excuse me, that the atmosphere of support for the schools, willingness to learn about the different aspects of it, was very much there. And then some conversations afterwards that it happened. A former parent came up and touched base with me in terms of that support for schools and what her children are doing now. But also, what she gave to our school when I was a principal at Denali, we had a lemon tree, and it bore fruit. And it was, how could we share these lemons with everybody in the school? And I thought, lemonade, what else do you make? And she said, oh, what about lemon bars? And, yeah, for 500 people? She says, oh, I can do that. And she just volunteered her time and came in and made lemon bars with fresh lemons from her lemon tree. Just one example of how people step up. And then a gentleman stopped me afterwards in the hallway, and he said, you know, I understand that sometimes it's hard for parents to pay for school lunches, and the importance of that. How can we help? How can I help in my school? And what had just hit me again is how often, and there are so many opportunities that our community steps up in small ways, but very, very important in a significant way. So a big thanks to the Fairbanks community for what they do for our schools, but most importantly, for our students and to think of all our students. I will stop.
With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, second.
We are adjourned.